Good afternoon, I am Councilman Robert Stokes, Chairman of Education, Workforce, and Youth Committee. We are meeting today to discuss Council Resolution 21-0053R and informational hearing on school lunches. For the purpose invited Baltimore City Public School System students, the Chief Executive Office of the Baltimore City School System, and relevant Baltimore City Public School System staff to discuss with the council their ideas and concerns about public school lunches. I'd like to mention the members of this committee. We have Councilman Bullock from the Ninth District.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
We have Councilman Glover from the Thirteenth District. Councilman Glover? Okay, we'll come back. We have Councilwoman Porter from the Tenth District.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Vice President of the City Council, Councilwoman Middleton from the Sixth District.
Thank you.
Councilman Cohen had a, excuse me, had a prior commitment. Councilman Torrance is running a little late, so as soon as he get here, we'll be able to announce him also. Also, we have Nikki Thompson from Council President's Office.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
And Nina Thimnas from Mayor Scott's office.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Before I start, I'm asking all speakers and panelists, mute yourself when you're not speaking. Identify yourself when you speak. Speak slowly and clearly. After you finish speaking, please mute yourself again until you are asked to speak again. I don't believe the Council President is on here. So first, we will hear from the sponsor of this resolution, Councilwoman Odette Ramos, who will give open remarks in a short video.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Our videos are not working, so we're not doing the videos today, unfortunately, but we have great testimony to be able to make the case. Mr. Chair, members of the committee, thank you so much for your time today to talk about public school lunches. Public school lunches are a very important issue for the students in all of our schools. And so I'm really thrilled that one of my constituents, Audrey, who you'll hear from, she lives in Coldstream Homestead, Montebello, but is a student at the A-School. She and some of her students are extremely concerned about school lunches, both for themselves and for their friends. As I was talking with them, we, you know, learned a lot about some of the problems and challenges that they're having, and I'll let them explain it. But I do want you to, this is just an exciting time for them to also testify before the council. So it's a great moment for them. And so I'm very proud of the students for working hard to get ready for this. And I want to thank their teacher, Ms. Carr, who has also helped them to get ready. And all of the parents and students will be testifying today. This is something that they're very passionate about, and I'm grateful for all of your time in listening to our students. So during the session, we'll hope you'll hear, you definitely will hear about some of the issues. But throughout the session and afterwards, we hope that you'll help us, you know, understand that the, that you'll understand that we have a lot to do in this work. We need to ensure that students have more of a voice in school lunch choices. We need to allocate more funding for school lunches and remove regulatory limitations. There are some regulations at the federal, state, and local level that we need to address to help do this. So with that, I want to leave it, turn it back over to you, Mr. Chair, and I really appreciate the time that everyone is taking today to listen to us. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Next, we will hear from the Chief Executive Officer for Baltimore City School System, Sonia Sando Lisa.
Great, thank you, Councilman Stokes. I want to thank Councilwoman Ramos for her sponsorship of this. And my apologies ahead of time. I did let the committee know that I'm actually in between meetings right now, so I'm going to go back to another meeting. But I think, as Councilwoman Ramos just said, this is an important issue. And I wanted to make sure that I had the opportunity to kick off the full presentation that staff will share. And then, as usual, we get really important feedback for students, from students and families alike. I too, like Councilwoman Ramos, had a chance to meet Audrey. I was visiting Ms. Greco's class at ACE during a recent visit. And Ms. Greco introduced me to Audrey, and I had a chance to hear some of her concerns. I'm glad that the public will be able to hear some of what I got to hear that day. And I do just want to say that even with the work that we are doing in city schools, I really appreciated Audrey's thoughtfulness and the fact that she has teachers who have helped her hone skills to be able to be here tonight. But knowing, I must say, meet, having met Audrey, that it really was her drive, her determination, and her insights that brought us here tonight. So thank you to Audrey and all the other students this evening that I haven't had a chance to meet, but thank you for helping to make our system better. And so with that, Mr. Chair, I would like to, I would like to just take a few minutes as I'm here, and I want to thank Councilwoman Ramos for, again, introducing the resolution and giving us the opportunity to discuss our efforts related to school lunches, particularly in light of the pandemic. I did thank the young, the young people. And I do want to just point out that tonight's presentation had a city school director of food and nutrition services. But before I turn it over to Liz, I do just want to take a moment to recognize her work and the work of her entire team since the start of COVID. It shouldn't be lost. Since the pandemic first closed schools in March of 2020, city schools has never from maintaining food service operations. Last year, we served over four million meals. By comparison, we normally serve over 10 million annually. This school year, we do anticipate significant challenges and limitations on food service operations.
Madam CEO, you're freezing up, so we didn't hear some of the things.
That I think we are.
You can keep talking.
Okay, thank you, Councilman. Thank you, Council Chair. Newly, the COVID pandemic has placed significant challenges and limitations on food service operations. Limited availability of menu items due to well-publicized supply chain issues, restrictions on cafeteria capacity and eating locations, and a large number of staff vacancies. While these challenges are by no means limited to Baltimore City Schools, we are trying to minimize the disruption to our meal program and to maintain our commitment to our guiding principles outlined in our wellness policy and sustainability policy. Additionally, we are working to reduce the risk inherent to mealtimes when masks come off, promoting outdoor lunch district-wide. Students should receive at least two entree options daily. One should be a hot item. Last year's menu was mostly cold due to the grab-and-go nature of meals. We encourage students and families to let us know when they are not satisfied with meals. Complaints or concerns can be addressed by cafeteria staff or constituents can email Liz directly. We will share her email address again later this evening, but it is eamarcheta, M-A-R-C-H-E-T-T-A, at bcps.k12.md.us. You'll also hear more from Liz about our efforts to increase student participation in the development of school lunches. Pre-pandemic, our team conducted student taste testing events each spring to gather student feedback as modifications were made to the menu and new items were offered, while unpopular items were removed. Additionally, a group of four high school students with Wide Angle Media helped to design our new food truck, which will be piloted this school year. In closing, I will turn it over to Liz Marquette and the team. I thank you again for this opportunity and thank you again for being patient with me, given that I am triple booked this evening. And I will turn it over to Liz. Thank you very much, Councilman.
Thank you. Before we start, Madam CEO, can you put that email in the chat, the one you just mentioned?
Absolutely, I will ask. I'm Melissa Room from Martin. Oh, there's, Liz is putting in. Thank you, Liz. All right, thanks, everyone.
Thank you so much. As Dr. Sando Lisa said, my name is Elizabeth Marchetta. I am the Executive Director of Food and Nutrition Services for Baltimore City Public Schools. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen, so please let me know if you do not see it. Okay. So I'll just go ahead and get started, and hopefully this will take less than 10 to 15 minutes. But I wanted to provide an overview of our current operations, how they have been adjusted during the COVID time, look at some of the nutritional regulations, both at USDA and our local level, and then go into a little bit about our Farms to Schools program. So, you know, just to get started, you know, we're going to take a look at our operations. So we have some guiding principles that are set out in city schools wellness policy and our sustainability policy, and they are written down here. I'm not going to read through all of them, but I will just, you know, highlight the fact that we are here to serve free USDA meals. We are trying to eliminate ingredients that we know are not harmful for our students, whether or not they are spelled out in USDA's policy. We're also looking at strategies to increase meal participation and reduce waste. We don't want healthy trash cans. We want healthy students. Our dietitian often says that. So it doesn't matter if we make something that's very healthy. If our students don't find it appetizing and don't eat it, we are failing at our job. And then the last thing I want to highlight is that we prioritize local procurement and want to see, as much as we can, the foods that we buy come from our region. So this slide gives an overview of the different meal programs that we have currently in city schools. We offer free breakfast and lunch. We've offered them for free since 2015. We usually do a summer meal program. And then in the past five years, we've piloted an after-school snack and supper program. We also have a fresh fruit and vegetable program that provides free fresh fruits and vegetables at eligible elementary schools. And then we partner with the Maryland Food Bank and our community school coordinators to make sure that families have food pantries at sites throughout the city. Last school year, you know, we were in this point of really adjusting into this long reopening. So when schools first closed in February of 2020, you know, we really had to pivot and open up initially 18, and then that grew to 28 emergency sites. Last school year, we had over 80 sites open for grab-and-grow meals specifically, in addition to offering meals to all students that were at in-person programs. And then this year, we are, you know, fully relaunching our in-person meal program, and we have selected 17 sites that are designated for student pickup if students are enrolled in the virtual academy. And a lot of this response would have never been possible without partnerships with World Central Kitchen, our different city agencies and community organizations who have really helped us to, you know, get the word out about what is out there and fill in the gaps where we are not able to serve. So these are just some photos of our staff and the different meal setups last year. And then Dr. S. touched on this briefly, but I wanted to provide some data that shows the average number of meals we're serving. So you can see here, prior to the COVID pandemic, we were serving around 90,000 meals a day. Last year, that dropped below 30,000 meals. And, you know, the main reason for that is because students were not in school. So people had to come out to get meals, and that, you know, understandably created a much lower participation rate than we would normally see. This year, so far, we've seen our team serving about 50,000 meals per day. So we're up, we're much closer to our pre-pandemic volumes. But it can't be emphasized, even though we felt, we put a lot of work into the meals we served last year and we're proud to have served over 4 million, it was still not enough, and there was still a large gap. Changing our operations during COVID has been extremely challenging, and that's simply because without being able to wear a mask while you're eating, it is going to be a time of high risk and understandably stressed. So we have really tried to provide different supports to schools, and our team, you know, continues to maintain, you know, very strict health and safety regulations around food service. But also, we've been really trying to promote outdoor meals because we know that eating meals outdoors is the safest thing for students and for adults. So on some of these slides, you can see how some of our schools are, you know, managing to make outdoor meals work at their sites. And it's not necessarily with really fancy outdoor tables or equipment. You know, students are very resilient, and we're really excited to see that these schools have just, you know, embraced what we know is the safest way to eat meals right now. So shout out to these schools that are doing a terrific job because it is not easy to manage the logistics for a lunchroom. So we're really trying to help support our schools to getting there. One other thing that Dr. S. mentioned that I want to highlight is a food truck. We worked with four high school students from schools throughout our city last school year to design a food truck that would be appealing to our high school students. We hope to launch this later this fall. It will not only, you know, provide backup during this pandemic, but will also be, you know, showing up at our different high school locations. So hopefully, many of our panelists will see it outside. If not later this fall, then certainly this spring. And many people have probably seen some of the media attention that's been given to the supply chain shortages and some of the disruptions. It is very real. And I will just say that in comparison to other districts, I think our team has really, in some ways, been let off easy, partially because we have a really great dietitian, Hope Bren, and a manager of procurement, Monique Rol, who do an excellent job at working with our vendors to try to keep our food supplies stable. So we have seen over 1,100 cases of various items that have been shorted in the first six weeks of school. But our team has done a really good job that when we have a shortage for one item, trying to find an appropriate substitute. Additionally, we have a lot of vacancies. We have over 100 open positions right now in food services. So if you know someone that's interested, please tell them to apply by the district's career website. Moving into a little bit about the USDA nutrition quality, this information is available, you know, online. But I just wanted to give an overview that USDA requires us for our school lunches to offer these five different components: a fruit, vegetable, grain, protein item, and dairy. The fruit and vegetables get broken down into further subgroups, and they're actually weekly minimum requirements and volumes that we are supposed to offer to meet the nutritional requirements. While there are a lot of waivers in place right now that will not financially punish districts if they're not able to meet them due to supply chain shortages, it is our every intention to maintain this high level of nutritional requirements for our school meals because we think that they are important. And then the one thing I will just also mention is that our per-meal reimbursement rate would normally be around $3.90. This year, USDA is reimbursing school districts at the higher summer rate throughout the school year, and that's about $4.31. But to give you context for that, these prices are not increasing at the rate of increase that we are seeing the prices of our food increase. So for example, we usually provide a compostable, a flat tray that students can take through the cafeteria with them, and that costs, it's about seven cents per tray. We now have been using a lot of three-compartment clamshell containers, to-go containers, and those cost over 30 cents per tray. So when you are adding that up to millions and millions of meals, the impact of having that small change in price will actually be quite significant. So it is something, you know, we are trying to offer a high-quality meal, but $4.31 for both the food and the labor is not a really high enough reimbursement to get where we want to get as a district. With that being said, I do just want to point attention to a study that came out this year in the Journal of the American Medical Association, which looked at more than 60,000 individuals and the food sources and diet quality of foods from those food sources. And it found significant improvement in the nutritional quality of foods consumed at schools. And a lot of this goes back to the nutrition standards that were promoted by Michelle Obama and adopted in 2010. And again, we really are trying to hold to these standards because we know it is important to offer healthy lunches at school. Beyond the federal requirements, we have some standards specifically in Baltimore City that we try to meet. So we want to make sure there's fresh fruit at every meal. We do not allow our schools to offer juice as an alternate option for fruit. We want to make sure that kids are actually getting fresh fruit, not 100% fruit juice. We try to source locally, like I mentioned, and we have a list of ingredients that we are trying to eliminate from our menu items, including things like high-fructose corn syrup and artificial colors. All of our protein options are pork-free on our menu, and all of our grains are whole-rich. The other thing I want to point out is that the district has been slowly transitioning away from styrofoam. So we introduced compostable trays about three years ago now. And last year, or two years ago, we added compostable cutlery, utensils, and straws to that list of items. So although the meal you see in the lower right-hand corner here has a lot of plastic and packaging that is not compostable, we are really trying to move the majority of our packaging in the direction that it can be composted.
Ms. Elizabeth, how many more slides do you have? I've got a little change of the process because Councilman Bullock has a commitment, so we're going to let you finish up.
I will go through the next couple ones quickly.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
So just to note, you can find allergies, and if you need special accommodations, those are all available on our website in English and in Spanish. I just wanted to show people that we spent over $1 million in local sourcing last year, even though we decreased the amount of food that we were purchasing because our volume was down. And then we are doing various things related to food waste, and I won't read through these things because you will all have the PowerPoint. But there's more information here, as well as on our Farms to Schools program. I'm just extending the invitation to anyone to come out to Great Kids Farm. If you have not been there, it's a wonderful place and a great part of our school district. We offer a variety of field trips, including second-grade curriculum aligned to the science curriculum. And in the past year, we did a lot of virtual programs that were offered. Our team also offers support in terms of seedling kits and materials to schools so that they can launch school gardens without having to go anyplace outside of their school grounds. Here's some more information on the reach that we had last year, and that is our website. People want more information, they can email me or farms@bcps.k12.md.us.
Thank you, Ms. Elizabeth. Can you send that, that information to, presentation to actually the members of the council here and the committee members? So they, I want everybody here, not just the committee members. So real quick, because of Councilman Bullock, after get away at 5:30, we usually go to the students now. So we, and thank you, Ms. Elizabeth. We're going to go to Councilman Bullock. If he had any questions, then Councilwoman, we will be going over to the Law Department after that, get their report. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Stokes. Just want to say thank you to Councilwoman Ramos for having this meeting. Again, you know, we recognize your health is really connected to our diet, and so thinking about what young people are dealing with. And Ms. Marchetta, we talked about styrofoam years ago. We, even before the ban, the school system was really already on board with that, thinking about the health of our young people. So just glad to see you moving in that direction, and I'll be happy to hear from some of our young people as well. So thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Councilman. I believe we have Ms. Hillary Rudi from the Law Department to give her report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Law Department stands by its report and approves this resolution for form and legal sufficiency.
Thank you so much. Next, we will hear from the four students. Audrey, could you state your whole name? After Audrey, Meha, state your complete name. The third person will be Monica, your whole name. And Colin, just state your whole name in that order. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Mahab.
Go ahead and speak, just state your whole name. Thank you. Audrey? Is Audrey on here? Okay.
They're all in the same classroom, Mr. Chair, so they're getting them.
Okay, well, whatever order they want to come in, they can just state their whole name and speak. Thank you.
Mahab, you're ready.
My name is Audrey Aquin Perry.
Go ahead.
Go ahead, Audrey.
I said, my name is Audrey Aquin Perry.
Does you want, make the comment, do the testimony? You can go ahead and, y'all.
My name is Colin Smith.
Alan, you can go ahead. You want to say something, Colin? It's your testimony we want to hear from.
Hello, city council members. My name is Colin Smith, a senior at ACE, which stands for the Academy for College and Career Exploration, Class of 2022. I would like to talk to you about our city's public schools lunch situation and discuss how we can come up with a solution. I feel that we need better school lunches because school is a critical, school lunch is critical to a student's health and to their well-being. It's important because a better lunch makes sure that students have enough energy and nutrition they need to get through the day, especially for low-income students who might not really have meals at home. Low-income, low-income students that don't have good nutritious foods at home may have to come to school for a decent meal. Not only that, but for the low-income students that don't have any food at home at all, schools are the only source of food for them. And if that's the case, they should be eating food that is not only healthy, nutritious, and filled with protein, but also food that is tasty and delicious for everyone to enjoy. This, this will not only help them learn, but also feel that schools is, school can be another type of home for them, a place where they can get what they need and also be cared for. This could improve attendance and also make students feel that they belong. In my experience, school lunch has not really been up to par. Baltimore City Public School Lunch needs to be better than what it is now. I just feel that, I just can't help but feel that if we had better school lunches, it would help us students be more prepared to learn. We might have fewer absences, and students could attend class more frequently. I hope that you can now somewhat understand how we students feel about lunch here and at least consider everything that's going to be said here today. Thank you all for listening.
Thank you, Mr. Colin Smith. Whoever's speaking next, just state your whole name, and the floor is yours. Monica, are you, are you on the call?
Hello, my.
We hear you, is this Monica? Oh. Mahab, could you just state your whole name and you could speak?
Hello, I am Mahatara. I'm somewhere at ACE High School. I like to work to change things to be better, and I like to be part of every change. And this is why I'm here today, to help create change when it comes to school lunch in Baltimore City Schools. I'm here because I have two major issues with our current school lunch. However, I'm very hopeful they can be fixed. However, I'm very hopeful they can be fixed. First issue is the amount of food waste. A lot of food is being thrown away, and as a student, I see so much food is being thrown away. There are two reasons for this. First, it's not fresh or tasty food. Second, students are told to take food they are now, they know they are not going to eat. I really care about this issue, and I feel that we can do better. We should stop wasting food and the resources that go into it. To stop wasting, we need to stop making students take the food they know they are not going to eat. And we should give better food so we can actually eat and enjoy it. Second, I believe students should have more options. We only get strawberry and chocolate milk, turkey with a toast, and if there's a salad, it is very appetizing. We want cooked food, hot lunch, and we want more options for vegetarians. We want, we want to have choices, and we want juice and a variety of food that we can enjoy. And finally, let's make this change for ourselves and the future generations of Baltimore City students to come. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Before we go to the next speaker, I last but not least, I did not mention the great staff person here, Ms. Marbury. Thank you so much. So our next speaker, you can state your name, and you, the floor is yours.
Good evening, council members. My name is Audrey Akin Perry, and I am an 11th grader at ACE. As a Baltimore school student, I felt something needed to change about school lunch. So I wrote a letter to Councilwoman Ramos last February and suggested a bill to allow students to voice their concerns and be able to influence their menu options. I think students should have a say in the type of food being served to them. After all, we are the ones eating it. Doing this will allow student preferences to be heard, and they would be able to eat their desired food and feel happy about their lunch, and therefore be more ready for their classes afterward. You could gather student views and opinions by conducting surveys about menu preferences, including allergies and other dietary restrictions. Students and their preferences are too often ignored about things that directly affect and concern them. These decisions should be one made by students or in partnership with students. This would be a great opportunity to have students lead to represent other students' preferences and acknowledge and listen to young people. We could hear students multiple ways by conducting surveys, electing student representatives from each school, gathering parents' input, and perhaps focus groups with students, cafeteria staff, and others. This change could be an opportunity for Baltimore City to be a place where students and their representatives work together and where the school food menu will not be decided solely by other people. This is a chance to let students do, and also to meet their needs and help them excel in school. This could be a chance to help students become responsible decision-makers, particularly about their own health and eating habits. It would also help shape students to be responsible leaders and advocates. This opportunity we should not pass up. Thank you for your time and contribution.
Thank you so much. Monica? Is Monica still on the call and would like to speak?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman. This is Monica Lapenta. I'm the Executive Director of the Bit Center, and I'm here tonight as, offering my testimony after my organization has been in far front in the leading of serving meals. We have a think tank that it's called My School Meals that has been working for the past two years in looking what is happening nationwide and what is happening in the other, outside of the U.S. in term of lunches and what the alternatives are. So if you allow me, Mr. Chair, and thank you so much to Councilwoman Ramos for allowing me to be here, and to the committee members. If you allow me to, I would like to share a quick presentation, and I will be, I promise I will be very, very quick. So let me. Thank you so much. Appreciate you, Mr. Chair. Okay. Apparently, I cannot share my presentation. Just give me one moment. Okay. Well, let's put it like that. I will, I will go without it, because I know that I will share with you later. So.
You try again. You try it again.
Yeah, okay. Give me one second. Apparently, my privacy sessions are not working properly. I will make a point to send the presentation to you all. This presentation will also be available on our website, so everybody will be able to access to it. Of late, I want to point out something that I know well. Fifty, 15.8% of our kids are food insecure. The school is most of the time the only place where they get the only meal of the day. We have seen in the past 19 months, serving and preparing dinner every, and meals every day, how difficult it is for family to get nutritious food. It's getting, it's getting immensely complicated. We do understand, because we make meals and we cook every day, that there is a lot of work that has been implemented by the school system and by, and we really love our cafeteria ladies, but we think we can offer a support in the future choices. And by that, I mean, just a note, maybe nobody noticed that the new 21st Century Building have a commercial kitchen that no one cooks in it. And that when Audrey and Hama were wasting, were talking about food waste, the WWF report in 2019 mentioned that there are 530,000 billions of tons of food that is wasted. I want to repeat this number, 530,000 billions of tons. We are only 33, 330 millions in this country, so there is something that clearly doesn't work. Ms. Marchetta mentioned clearly that one of the challenges is the cost of the meal, because it's, it was 351, and now it's 390, and the summer meal is 431. But we cook for that budget, and there are other larger school system in the nation, like Denver Public School, that cooks every day and stay in that budget, offering alternatives. So probably we should look into it. The presentation that I had ready and I was not able to share is, has a picture that can show you what is the difference, and also what is the difference in term of appeal. What the kids are looking for here is something that they love to enjoy, love to eat. And what is that? Why it's so important from our perspective that the kids eat well? Because poor nutrition is caused by under and overeating, not having enough of the healthy food we need each day, or consuming too many types of food and drink, low in fiber, high in fat, salt on sugar. What can we do? How does poor nutrition affect us? Being overweight, tooth decay, eye blood pressure, high cholesterol, heart disease and strokes, type 2 diabetes, osteoporosis. There is also one more thing. Those are all money that we have to spend, because there is a direct correlation for, to the increase of the diseases caused by poor nutrition and the increase of our public healthcare expenditure. So.
Monica, could you wrap it up a little bit, please?
Yeah. So I want to make sure that I offer as a as a suggestion to look at what other systems are doing that is working. Because yes, we've done great progress, but if our kids need more, this is the time to provide that more than they need to. And I support this, this resolution, because it will improve impressively the condition of our school meal, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Monica. We appreciate your testimony. And to our three young people, you did an excellent job, and you can actually send your testimony to Councilwoman Odet Ramos, so we have it on the file. Thank you for your testimony also, Ms. Monica.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, now we're gonna go to questions from our committee, and I will start off with our Vice President of the City Council, Councilwoman Sharon Middleton from the 6th District.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I don't really have any questions, but just a statement. As a former food and nutrition teacher, there's always room for improving the health of our students, and I do support the resolution.
Thank you. By the way, Council Vice President, you caught me the President, and I don't want Nick calling me, Mr. President calling me up.
Sorry about that, Mr. Chair.
That's all right. Councilwoman Porter from the 10th, if you have any questions.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. Similar to Vice Chair Middleton, I don't have any questions. Simply a statement, I applaud you all for bringing this forth to the council. It takes incredible courage, tenacity, and perseverance, and so I applaud you all. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Councilman Glover from the 13th District? Councilman Glover? Okay, we'll come back. Councilman Bullock, you know, he had a prior commitment, so he already had his questions. Councilman Cohen is excused. He had a prior commitment. We're still waiting for Councilman Torrance, because he was running late. So this go, questions go back to the sponsor of the bill, Councilwoman Odet Ramos.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair and committee members. Thank you to Audrey and to Maha and Colin. They did such a wonderful job, and there's more students that will be testifying when we get to public testimony. I had a couple questions for the school system. Thank you very much, Ms. Marchetta, for being with us. I really appreciate this. And also to the committee, I did have a couple other videos from students. I will send those to you, so you can take a look at them. They really did a great job. It just didn't work on the webex. I don't know why. So you talked a little bit about the USDA having specific regulations, which includes the vegetable, the grain, the protein, and the milk, and one other. And, and then the school system is, is supplying fruit as well in most, in most cases. I was wondering, there's, there's, it seems to me from just talking with a lot of the students, that it's, it's, all of those are there, it's just not enough. One of our students that was on a video talked about, he's an athlete, he has a soccer practice and soccer games, and he got four fish sticks and a milk and salad. And so how, how can we sort of boost up the meals so there's more variety, but there's more of it?
Yeah, thank you. That's a great question, and he's not the only athlete, I will say, that's out there. So I will say that our dietitian does struggle sometimes to meet the minimum calorie ranges. And that is partially because we have very strict fat and sodium limitations on school meals. And you have to get your calories from somewhere. You know, personally, I think we should be allowed a little bit more fat in school meals. But I will say, you know, there are, there have been slow changes and updates to USDA's nutrition requirements. There, we are required to offer all of those five items, and normally we offer something called offer versus serve, which is we offer the fruit, vegetable, whole grain, protein, and milk. Kids only have to take three of those for it to be a reimbursable meal, and this helps us to reduce food waste. So the number one most wasted product on our menu is milk, and students do not have to take milk for it to be a free meal. But because of the way that it is kind of lined up, and because some of our, you know, well-known challenges with water in our district, we don't offer milk next to water. And so there are some things around there that I think just, you know, contribute to a little bit of a lack of clarity around what things are required to take in terms of actually getting more food from there. You know, we're not allowed by USDA requirements. While we can serve unlimited fresh fruits and vegetables, we can't offer a second entree to students. So I do hear that. Students are welcome to purchase an additional entree, but we cannot offer to a child or a student two meals in a single day. We can do breakfast, lunch, snack, and supper, and, and do four meals, different meals in a day, but we can't offer two lunches to the same student. The other thing I will add is that before COVID, we did have shared tables in many of our cafeterias that allowed items that students were not going to finish to then go to other students if they wanted them. Unfortunately, one of the things with COVID is that we are not having those right now, and hopefully we will have them next year too, because that is, is another way for students that are looking for something else to, to get it.
So that's a, that's a federal regulation on the calorie needs, right?
That is correct.
Uh huh, okay. And then the, the other question was about going back to the, the food waste issue. You mentioned, I was gonna ask, you know, what's the food that gets thrown away the most? You know, there's also people who don't eat dairy. We have another student in one of the videos who said, you know, lactose intolerant and is not going to be able to take it. Now, you just said that they don't have to take it, but the way that it's lined up, it seems like they feel like they have to. Is there an alternative?
Yeah, we will accommodate any medically documented allergy or modification. So families just have to fill that form out online. We do offer lactaid. That being said, I will say that is one of the items that it, we have experienced a lot of shortages in the beginning of the school year. We look to have a secure supply at this point, but that is one of the things that it was a struggle with in the beginning of the year. But I will say too, our dietitian, if they receive a documentation from the doctor, our dietitian will work and create a specific menu for that student to make sure they are able to get the minimum calories that are required, and they are not just losing items without some sort of supplemental or alternate option.
My daughter goes to public school, and we take our, take lunch, because we, my daughter and I don't have meat or dairy. So her option is peanut butter and jelly every day. And so that is not, and it's not a medical thing, that's a choice that we made. And yet, you know, so she's, so we, we are able to bring lunch, and that's good. But not everybody will be able to do that. And so having peanut butter and jelly all the time. My mother said I lived on peanut butter and jelly, but you know, that's not always the best way to do it. So I would hope that we can sort of do a better job, because there's other people who have maybe religious beliefs that in their, their food choices. So I do hope that we can figure that part out as, as well. And so you had said that the USDA, the reimbursable rate is $4.13. Did I get that right? So for every meal that is, that is given, the, the school system gets back $4.13?
Right now, Baltimore City is receiving $4.31 per meal.
See, I wrote it down wrong. Okay, thank you. And so do you try to stay within that reimbursable, or are you supplementing the, the budget in some way to be able to provide more?
Yeah, so I will say for the past two years, our department has run at a significant loss that has been subsidized by the school district's general fund to make sure that we are able to provide meals. Because with all the packaging and additional items and increase in food costs, that it, it just has surpassed the USDA reimbursement. The other thing I wanted to touch on that you had talked about too, which is increasing vegetarian options. I can really appreciate that, and our, our team really did try to come up with other vegetarian alternates. I will say that is one of the lower-volume requests that we do receive. And with peanut butter and jelly, it is something that if we take it off the menu, we might just have as many people revolt, you know. Um, you know, with peanut butter and jelly and pizza are two things which are, you know, uh, vegetarian, but they are not what we think of, I, in many ways, I think as aspirational vegetarian items, nor are they very, very creative. But again, they are something that a lot of students do eat every day. Um, so that is another thing that we do try to hold, um, is trying to increase the amount of options and we have tried to look at more use of legumes, um, and different beans to meet that protein requirement. Um, you know, again, this year is, is very difficult. We are seeing a lot of our suppliers, um, reduce the number of items that they are offering. Um, so we are trying to hold on as best we can this year, but that is certainly something that we want to continue to do, um, not just to offer more options to students, but we know that, um, from a sustainability perspective, um, you know, not having a meat-heavy menu is really ideal.
Thank you, Councilwoman. We appreciate your comments and your, uh, questions, but we got to move on to, uh, public testimony, but I wanted to ask Ms. Elizabeth. Um, we talk about five hundred million pounds of food. Have we thought about doing composting in the schools or teaching our young people how to do compost in their community? Because when they do that, that money comes back to the community. So is the school system looking at the composting piece? If we wasting that kind of money, we need to get paid for it.
Yeah, um, we are certainly eager to do what we can to move in the direction of composting. Um, you know, right now that is a matter of having a compost, an industrial composter that has the level of infrastructure that they can pick up, um, regularly from a hundred and sixty-five sites. Um, so we have been trying to look into that. We are eager to see a large-scale composting facility, um, that we can, you know, engage with and use. Um, and it is something that we are hoping to do pilots with at least some smaller scale composters in the next couple of years, um, just to really figure out how is it that we get that to work in our kitchens and our cafeterias? Um, because there's a different, a couple of different areas we could try to start, get compost from the kitchens, um, we could work directly with students, um, with the waste that they are throwing away. Um, so we're trying this year to really plan and evaluate how we can push that out a little bit more.
Thank you so much. I want to go back to, um, Councilman Glover to see if he's still on the line, if he had any questions. If not, we want to go over to, um, public testimony. Councilman Glover? Okay, we're going to move on to our next part of this, um, hearing. Um, Ms. Marguerite, do we have any, um, public testimony? Okay, before we start, for those who sign and using computer, please use the raise hand function to indicate that you wish to testify. We will start with you. Next, we will go through all of the users who called in to the hearing. Attendees who called cannot be identified by name will be unmuted by the committee staff one by one. You will hear two beeps when you are unmuted. If you wish to testify, please state your name at the beginning of your testimony. If a caller does not want to provide testimony, then simply, they need, simply need to say they don't want to provide testimony after the two beeps. If any speaker is audible, they will be directed to call back. Each speaker is allowed two minutes to testify. Ms. Marguerite, you can start.
Michael, please show your hands.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Mikhail Carthen and I will be talking about the importance of having a school lunch. I am in the 10th grade. I'm a 10th grade student at Ace and I have in a school store. I am a 10th grader at Ace and I do not eat school lunch. Um, rather than discussing those reasons, I would like to focus on why, focus on why students deserve a school store in their buildings. First, the school store can help with funding, can help with funding for things like school trips, equipment, school supplies and more. The school is also conveni, the school store is also convenient and affordable for students that would like to have school gear. Also, working in a school store, you gain experience and learn how to have good customer service, which could help in future, future jobs or careers. What better way to build entrepreneurship in our young people like me than to start at school? Also, some schools have vending machines, which should be available to all schools. Additionally, students who don't eat school lunch could utilize the store and would give them a variety of options to choose from during lunch and after school. When making decisions about the school lunch and food options, please consider making out, making sure school lunches, school, the school store is a priority.
Thank you so much. Great presentation.
Molly Carr.
Ms. Carr, you can go ahead.
Um, a student is going to be using our, um, my cellphone first, so she'll be speaking.
Okay.
Hello, to start I want to say thank you. Hello, hello everyone. To start I want to say thank you for being here and listening to us. It's mean a lot you are taking the time to hear from students about an important issue. I'm Magdan Salha, senior student at Ace High School. I'm here to talk about making a change in Baltimore City Public Schools Lunch. Us, as, as students, we need fresh food, fresh vegetables and healthy routines. In our schools, we didn't get that. We, we usually have frozen meals rather, rather than fresh meals. The vegetables are not fresh and the chocolate milk, strawberry milk for lunch. We must eat in twenty minutes and then go to class. Many students didn't eat the food. So we returned to the class with the same empty stomach. Who can we focus? Who can we think without being full? Actually, we can to focus, I think, and I think adults can understand that. So what we want is to change the way we, we eat at school. This is our goal. Specifically, we want fresh vegetables and fruits, uh, freshly made food, goods and other drinks, uh, choices. A good example of, of meal, I think many students would be happy to eat, would be best with a protein. It would be wonderful to know the menu ahead of time and some different options throughout the week. And many of the, of the meals currently served, maybe something the student would be like to eat, but the quality of the food is not very good. Uh, I know that's not easy thing to do. There is many things to consider when we think about changing, uh, our school's food, but, uh, we must take action. Hungry students can't complete quality work, they can't think as well as they should. You care not only about student nutrition, but also their success, their education in school. You need to do something. My hope is that every student, every day will get healthy, delicious food in a school. This is our, this is, will help them to do all in school. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Molly. Great presentation.
Hey. All right, Mr. Chair, there's no other hands raised and there are no call-in users, so that should be the end of public testimony.
Thank you so much. Um, I'm, uh, let, uh, sponsor of the bill before we vote it out, give some closing remarks if she would like to. Councilwoman Odet Ramos.
Sure, I do see some other names here. Um, Ms. Curran, I don't know if those are staff names or if there are people interested in testifying, but they just didn't raise their hands.
If the chair would like, I would go down the list. There are almost twenty-five people on the list and I have, I can go down and unmute each one.
What I'm going to do is I'm going to go back to the raise hand function. For those who sign, using, signing using computer, please use the raise hand function to indicate that you wish to testify.
Okay, got it.
So we go from there.
Um, Councilwoman Ramos, is there anyone on that list that you would like for me to unmute?
Um, the, uh, no, all of the, the students, um, uh, that we had planned had testified. Um, I just wasn't sure if the others that had been here, um, are, are here. I would, uh, say if, if we could hear from, um, the teacher who is, uh, helping our students, that would be great and then we can, uh, wrap up. Uh, her name is Molly. She, uh, the previous student was using Ms. Carr's, um-
Okay, will do. Ms. Carr, you're unmuted. Molly Carr?
Thank you. Mm-hmm. Good evening. I'm happy to be here tonight and thankful for the opportunity to listen to students and others. I'm especially grateful to the council members for their attention and to Councilwoman Ramos for her leadership and for partnering with our students about this issue that's so important to them. My name is Molly Carr Swatek, Mrs. Carr to my students. I've been a social studies teacher in Baltimore City's Public Schools for thirteen years and I currently teach government at Ace. I will not take time to share my personal thoughts about student preferences or menu options. I will leave that to the students who have definitely shown their passion for this, this issue today. Instead, I'd like to highlight what I think would be an incredible opportunity for student leadership and meaningful partnerships to address the issue that would not only benefit our students, our school communities, but our entire district. As we work to create policy regarding what students eat daily in our cafeterias, I see an opportunity for students not only have their voices heard, but, but for Baltimore City Schools to embrace students who could provide the necessary input and leadership in this area. By collaborating together with students and others, hopefully the many innovative institutions and businesses throughout Baltimore, lunches will improve, students will be more satisfied and ready to learn and schools will better serve their students. Additionally, city schools will be developing young people who actively participate in making their own personal choices. Also, this could be a chance to build student leaders who partner with adults to represent for their peers and foster communities which are both responsive and inclusive of many perspectives and needs. Students should have a seat at the lunch table, but also at the decision-making table. These are authentic experiences of personal choice and leadership that will not only benefit school communities, but also the students who are involved in the process. The skills learned by taking an active role with our young people will help our young people continue to make good decisions for their health and beyond. I'm keenly aware of how multifaceted and perhaps daunting creating healthy and student-approved meals may be. The many details, regulations and changing desires of students are not simple, but I feel that this is an ideal opportunity to truly teach and partner with students to show them that their voice matters, that difficult tasks are worth tackling and that change is possible. I believe in both the students and the adults of Baltimore City Schools and their ability to work together to create new and different solutions to old problems that will truly change how students and families view and interact with our schools. Thank you again to Councilwoman Ramos, to Baltimore City Public Schools and to the council. I look forward to following our students' lead in the work ahead.
Thank you, Ms. Carr. We appreciate it. Um, that concludes our public testimony. Close, Councilwoman Ramos, who is the sponsor of this, do you want to give some closing remarks? Oh, okay. Before you start, Councilman Torrance, see you here, so thanks for being here. Real quick, I'm sure we are at the end of, did you have a question you want to ask before we conclude the hearing?
No, sir, not at this time. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Councilwoman Ramos, do you have closing remarks you would like to give?
I do. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you colleagues, uh, for taking the time this evening, uh, to listen to our students. Um, they were so great and, uh, I really do appreciate their time, uh, getting ready for this hearing and for Ms. Carr for helping them. Um, the students designed the flyer, they got the word out. Um, some students couldn't make it, so they made videos and I will send those to you because I think you will, uh, learn a lot. I learned a lot through this process and I'm looking forward to continuing to work with the students, um, on making changes that are significant for them. Um, and, you know, this is also an opportunity for them to learn our system in terms of how we make laws in the council, so this is the first step in the process to learn, to gather data, um, and then we'll go, uh, from there. So I just really appreciate, um, everybody's time today. Um, the students were amazing, uh, and, um, also I look forward to following up with the school system because it does sound like there are some points of improvement that can be made both internally and we need to also go to our federal level, so, uh, and state level. So I think that those are, uh, good, um, opportunities for us, um, as well. So, um, again, thank you so much, colleagues, for all of your, uh, time today and attention to this issue and, um, I look forward to continuing to work with you, um, as we, as we take this issue on and help our students, uh, get, um, better lunches so that they can, um, be successful in school. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilwoman. The committee will now take a vote. Is there motion to vote on Resolution twenty-one dash zero zero fifty-three R?
Motion-
Move second.
Made by Councilwoman Porter, second by, I think that was Bullatt, Councilman Bullatt? Thank you. Um, Stokes is a yes, council, I mean, Councilman Glover, Bullatt has, is excused. Uh, Stokes is a yes. Um, Councilman Bullatt had to leave even earlier. Councilman Cohen was excused, he had a prior commitment. Um, Councilman Glover?
Yes.
Council Vice President Middleton?
Yes.
Councilwoman Porter?
Yes.
Councilman Torrance?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Motion passed, the resolution will be placed on second reading on Monday, November the first, twenty twenty-one. I want to thank, uh, Councilwoman Ramos for bringing this, um, very important, uh, resolution to, just to the school system, but as our, as council colleagues, I want to thank our young people, they did an excellent job, keep up the good work. And again, I'm going to go back, Mrs. Elizabeth, and we need to talk and I will work with my colleague to talk about how we use composting. So we talking about throwing away that kind of food. We need to put some kind of composting program in place to teach our young people and they can, kind of, money can come back to the community or they can raise the money for their school for different projects. So, thank you, everybody, and everybody have a great day and be safe.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.